It's five o'clock and I'd like to call the January ninth, 2025 work session of the State and City Council to order. I will now entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
Counselor, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Arrowood has made a motion.
Second.
All righty, there's been a second. Can you call the roll, Mr. Kessinger? Can you call the roll?
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Our first item of business this evening is the Blue Ridge Court Services FY 2024 Annual Report. Ms. Beauregard.
Megan Roon, the Director of the Blue Ridge Court Services, is here this evening to provide her annual report. What you also have in front of you on the dais.
All right, so my name is Megan Roon and I am the Director of Blue Ridge Court Services. And I believe everyone actually has a printed hard copy of the annual report as well. So, thank you very much for having me here and I am just gonna proceed. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions, but of course I will ask for questions at the end as well.
Great, welcome Ms. Roon.
So, let me start out by saying, of course, we have two pictures there. So, we actually have two offices. Our main office is located downtown Stanton. We are in the White Star Mills Grill, White Star Mills Building. So, we are on the right-hand side of the building above Mill Street. We also have an office in Lexington, downtown Lexington. So, the mission of Blue Ridge Court Services is to provide research-proven sentencing alternatives for the local criminal justice system, to reduce jail overcrowding, enhance public safety, and offer rehabilitative opportunities. And we cover the cities of Stanton, Waynesboro, Lexington, and Buena Vista, and the counties of Augusta, Rockbridge, and Highland. So, let's go over our numbers for 2024. So, we served about seventeen hundred new clients over the fiscal year 2024, six hundred and seventy-one local probation placements, nine hundred and twenty-three pre-trial placements. Over the years, we've definitely, those numbers have shifted. So, our numbers used to be higher in probation, now they're higher in pre-trial. Pre-trial investigations, we conducted eight hundred and thirty-six, one hundred and fifty domestic violence placements, two hundred and fifty-one re-entry program referrals, eighty referrals to a pre-trial initiative on mental illness. And as I go through, I will explain to you what each of these programs are. Ninety-five folks referred to our home electronic monitoring program, twenty-three therapeutic docket inductions. And let me see. I believe it's thirteen, but let me double check. I'm not able to see the bottom number, thank you. And thirteen recovery court inductions. If you are familiar with our services in the past, you have heard this called drug court. As of July one, it is now recovery court. So, same program, different name.
So, the seventeen hundred new clients, what is that as a percentage increase over your previous?
It actually wasn't an increase over the previous year. In fact, we had just a few less. And I can even send you probably about five years that you could compare. I'll be more than happy to send that to council. It's interesting to see how it ebbs and flows. So, I'll be more than happy to do that. And if I happen to forget, email me. I'm not writing it down, but I will definitely get that to you. So, as I mentioned, we had six hundred and seventy-one probation placements, five hundred and fifty-three, eighty-two percent of our placements were misdemeanor cases, and one hundred and eighteen or eighteen percent were felony cases. So, let me stop right there. So, the difference between us and District Twelve, the state probation and parole office, we do handle on probation mainly the misdemeanor population. So, the felony cases that we supervise are either taken under advisement, deferred disposition, so they haven't been found guilty, or the sentence is twelve months or less. So, the folks that we supervise on probation would be housed at our local Middle River Regional Jail or Rockbridge Regional Jail, as opposed to the Department of Corrections. So, probation population, we had sixty-six percent male, thirty-four percent female, eighty percent Caucasian, eighteen percent African-American, two percent Hispanic Other. We had a seventy-six program success rate for our misdemeanors, which is great, fifty-one percent program success rate for felonies, which is, of course, less than the misdemeanor population. But a lot of our felony probation placements are actually possession of Schedule One or Two felony drug charges. And so, when you look, compare them to the state averages, fifty-one percent for felony cases, that's about what it is across the state. And that means that they have completed all of their court-ordered requirements. Fifty-three percent were employed, forty-three percent were unemployed, seventy-eight percent of those cases were low-risk, so the majority were low-risk. Everyone that comes through our door, now we do risk assessments on, so that we can spend more of our time on that twenty-seven percent medium risk in the high-risk population, and that way we're not over-supervising. And this just shows our probation placements broken down by jurisdiction. So, as you can see, we had twenty-six percent of probation cases out of Stanton, forty-three percent from Augusta County, and then you can clearly see the other. So, we get less than a handful out of Highland. Re-entry services. So, re-entry services is supported for, from the Community Action Partnership of Stanton Augusta and Waynesboro Grant, CAPSOL. This is one of my favorite programs. So, this allows us to kind of take things a step further. What we have learned over the years is that if we don't address the whole person and the basic needs, then when we are working on the court-ordered obligations, sometimes that's just not gonna happen for them unless we can address these basic needs. So, that's exactly what this program does. So, two hundred and fifty-one clients were referred to re-entry. I will say this, it's voluntary. So, we are working, we had over seventeen hundred people come through our door, and only two hundred and fifty-one, we offer it to everyone excepted the re-entry resources. So, we are, we are working, you know, with folks to let them know it's free, take it, we can assist. And obtaining employment, transportation, we provide tokens, emergency clothing, so the court will order someone to get a job. Some of these individuals don't have a resume, they've never presented in an interview, or they don't have clothing that they are comfortable interviewing in. We can help develop a resume, we can even practice interviewing skills, and we partner with, we have so many community partners. We partner with Valley Mission, where we can send them to the thrift store with a voucher for them to pick out an outfit to interview. Self-care kits, we also provide self-care kits. Every now and then, we'll have someone come through our door that they don't have shoes on their feet. Again, basic needs. So, we have self-care kits that just have the basic hygiene, shampoo, deodorant. We have female and male self-care kits. We actually also just received funding for just a small grant through CAPSOL. It's called, it's our winter supply grant. So, of course, we all know housing's an issue, shelters get full, we do have warm shelter in Valley Mission, but we actually, this is kind of where we're at, that we applied for a small grant to get sleeping bags, tents, gloves, just cold weather supplies. We partner with Middle River Regional Jail, we go into there monthly, and we meet with folks that are thirty days from being released. That way, we can go ahead and let them know what we offer. They don't have to be referred to Blue Ridge Court Services. We can still help them with re-entry. So, we go into the jail, let them know what we can provide, that way we can go back, start a file, and go ahead and start working on resources. Pre-trial services, a little like probation, however, these folks have not been to court, so they have not been convicted. We go into the jail each morning, collect information, and that way we come back, run a record, put information together for the judge, the attorneys, and that way it gives them a better idea as far as bond recommendations, and once they're released, exactly what that looks like, whether they, it's recommended for pre-trial supervision or not. We had nine hundred and twenty-three pre-trial placements. If we get someone on pre-trial, it's great that we can go ahead and get them in services. These are folks that, instead of sitting in Middle River Regional Jail, tying up beds, waiting to go to court, the judges, attorneys feel comfortable releasing them on pre-trial supervision for us to monitor and to go ahead and get them in services. As you can see, the demographic information, again, this is in the pamphlet that you have. Eighty-six percent program success rate, ninety-seven percent appearance rate, and ninety-four percent public safety rate. Main goal with pre-trial supervision is, of course, public safety and court appearance. Our main goal is to make sure that they appear in court. Pre-trial placements, again, this, this slide just kind of shows how it's broken down amongst the jurisdictions. It's gonna look very similar to probation. Domestic violence, so we do have a domestic violence caseload, one hundred and fifty domestic violence placements in, that should say, 2024. Eighty-nine percent male, eleven percent female. Again, we broke it down by jurisdiction, seventy-one placements from Augusta, forty-seven placements from Stanton, and so on. When folks are referred to us for domestic violence, a lot of those folks used to go into anger management. Well, we have learned over the years that if it's domestic violence, that they are assessed for batter's intervention, and then either they will go into that program, which is longer than anger management, and it's specifically related to domestic violence. Or sometimes that assessment will actually say, you know what, there's mental health that needs to be addressed before we actually put them in group, and then we're able to do that. So, two other of my favorites, we have two specialty dockets. We have our therapeutic docket, and then we have our recovery court. Our therapeutic docket program is specifically for folks that were in a mental health crisis at the time of their crime. So, a lot of times, that's what, they were in crisis during that time. We had twenty-three inductions into therapeutic docket in FY 2024, and eleven graduates. I will say that we had eleven graduates, which is fantastic. This is, it's not an easy program. It's intense, it's very intense. However, when you see folks come in, I'll give you an example. We had one fella come into the program, would hold his head down, could barely communicate, and this is because he wasn't in services, wasn't on proper medication, a lot of folks aren't able to hold down a job, they've lost the connection with their family. By the time he graduated, he was employed, reconnected with his family. It's a very different court setting. The judge comes off the bench, presents certificates when they phase up, looks them in the eye, "I am so proud of you," things that some folks have never heard. And so, a certificate, or he'll give wristbands, positive reinforcement. And I actually saw the fellow that graduated at his place of employment, and he had every band on that the judge had given him. So, you know, it's, we definitely learn what impacts folks. Yes. And I will say the specialized dockets, they impact us just as much as they do the participants. So, recovery court, looks a lot like therapeutic docket. However, this program targets individuals who have been involved in criminal activity arising from their addiction to alcohol or illegal substances. It does not just have to be a drug charge that will bring someone into recovery court, it could be larceny as a result of their addiction. We had thirteen new recovery court inductees and eight graduates, seven males and six Home electronic monitoring. So, home electronic monitoring, this is something that the judges and attorneys are able to release someone both either on pre-trial or they can serve their sentence. When it works as far as probation, someone serving their sentence, if the court feels like they can be out and about, and they're not gonna lose their job, which then in turn they could lose their housing, which then in turn affects their family, they can place them on home electronic monitoring for appropriate individuals. So, as you can see, in 2024, seventy-nine of our home electronic monitoring placements were male, sixteen were female. The daily cost of HEM is twelve dollars a day compared to the average daily jail bed cost of a hundred and nine dollars and fifty-two cents. So, you can look down as far as the number of participants, the bed days that were saved. And what I say is, bed days that were saved for someone else of higher risk that would need those beds. So, at least this frees up beds for the higher risk. Does this work for everyone? It does not. And that's not just home electronic monitoring, that's all of our programs. We have a lot of great success stories, and I could stand here all day and tell you about that. It doesn't work out for everyone, and we have to look out for public safety. So, if that becomes an issue, of course, then we request a show calls to have them appear back before the court where we can explain why this isn't working out, or we can request a KPS, which means they will be picked up immediately by the police. Finances, so we are supported by grants. We are a little different as far as the city of Stanton serves as our fiscal agent. Our main grant is from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and that's for local probation and pre-trial. And that covers most of our personnel. We also, and about seventy-three percent of our funding comes from DCJS. We also receive funding from the Virginia Supreme Court for our recovery court. CAPSOL, the Community Action Partnership for Stanton Augusta Waynesboro, that covers our re-entry services. Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, that is for therapeutic docket and pre-trial initiative on mental illness. I told you I was gonna tell you what that is. So, we have an acronym, it's called PIMI, Pre-trial Initiative on Mental Illness, that the magistrates or judges can put on a bond, all they have to put is that acronym, PIMI. And then when we receive it, we know that there's something we need to look at as far as mental health services. That way, we're not wasting any time, we can go ahead and have them evaluated, and we actually have a specific PIMI officer, so we know exactly who to direct those cases to. Participant fees, which include our supervision fees only for our probation clients and home electronic monitoring fees. Of course, we don't charge any fees for our pre-trial clients. Again, they haven't been to court, they haven't been convicted, and this is how it's broken down. We do take some of our participant fees and turn it back into resources for our clients, like planners and things like that, that we can assist them with. And that is all that I have. Any questions?
Counselors, do you have any questions for Ms. Roon?
I do. Ms. Roon.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for coming to talk to us, and Blue Ridge Court Services provides such as just an important alternative to direct line to the jail on that. But I did have one question, the closure of Augusta Correctional Facility, how's that gonna impact you guys? Will it have a financial impact for you, a workload impact? Or is it being absorbed by other areas?
It is. It's being absorbed because that's not, since we're not Department of Corrections, since we're local, and our folks are housed at Middle River Regional Jail, that really doesn't have a significant impact on us, since we're not Department of Corrections.
Okay, and it won't affect your, your funding from?
It will not. It will not. Our funding does not come from the Department of Corrections.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I'll make sure that I send you the past five years so that you can compare our numbers. It is interesting to see, so I'll make sure that I get that to you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, aside from the numbers, what other trends do you see in terms of maybe new risk factors for the clients you deal with, or?
So, of course.
Impact of the opioid crisis, that type of?
That's right. So, we are actually, as far as the opioid crisis, we are actually still seeing methamphetamine. Methamphetamine still continues to be significant in our area. We are seeing fentanyl mixed in with other things. For example, we can have somebody that provides a positive screen for marijuana and fentanyl. So, we are seeing fentanyl in a lot of other drugs. Mental health and substance abuse just continue to be, to be what we're seeing. So, which is why we have the specialty dockets, the PIMI program we partner. Again, we could not do any of this without our community partners. Valley Community Services Board, something was created called Rapid Diversion, so that if we have someone that we need to have an intake immediately, they don't have to go through open access and be turned away when they don't have any openings. We have somebody that can come on-site and actually complete that intake. So, we are constantly trying to look and fill those gaps. Our Blue Ridge Criminal Justice Board, that's one thing that that board does. We meet quarterly and things like that, we are able to address those gaps and to figure out what we need to do. So. Anything else? And you have my contact information, any questions or anything at any time, please feel free to reach out. I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. All righty. Well, we will now move on to a discussion of Parks and Recreation fees and recommended changes. Ms. Beauregard.
Thank you, Mayor Edwards. So, staff has been working with Parks and Recreation on reviewing fees, and we'd like to recommend this evening some updates to those fees and have a discussion with you all about that. We looked at neighboring localities, providing similar services, we're looking at residents of the city versus non-residents, for instance, and, and trying to do a little bit better in cost recovery than we've done historically. Chris Tuttle is here this evening, the Director of Parks and Recreation, and he will walk through his presentation and answer any questions.
All right. So, we'll start off with an overview of what our recommendations are. We're gonna touch base on facility rental fees, field rentals, pool fees, and summer campers, we call it Camp Stanton. So, if we agree with our proposal or make changes, any new rates would not go into effect to July one. That's for facilities, if you reserve a spot at Montgomery Hall or the Garden Center or any of our gyms, and we'll honor all those rental rates at the current rate. The reason I'm here and the reason why we're making a recommendation is, many of our fees haven't changed in over twenty years, some longer than that. The fee structure changes based on the market research that staff did locally and regionally as well in other recreation departments. And with that, with everything else, labor and operational costs are continuing to increase and help some of those offset. So, we'll get into it. What we can do, if we go through these, if you got any questions while we're going through the slides, just, just call it out. So, currently, we're gonna start with Gypsy Hill Park Bandstand. Our current rate's thirty-five a day, and that, as for a day, that is from when the park opens till it closes. So, what we're proposing, and we're offering a four-hour rate for fifty, and we're adding, which I should have mentioned earlier, also a non-resident fee in all these recommendations, which we currently do not have. So, we're looking at a four-hour rate, which many of our rentals in our facilities and at the bandstand are a four- or five-hour period, so we think that's fair. Start out at fifty for the resident, the non-resident seventy-five, if you want it all day. A hundred non-resident, be a hundred and fifty. And when I say all day, that's gonna be for a special event, festival, that type of an event.
Chris, you know what your total volume is on the, on the bandstand rentals? How much annual revenue you get from that now?
Well, for a rough number, on all of our rentals, under twenty thousand now, so it's not a great deal.
Including the Garden Center and all the stuff.
Considering Garden Center, we, we deposit them all into the same account, Garden Center So, we moved to the Garden Center, we do rent that out. That right now is currently booked, we rent one day a week, or as far as weekends, we don't do back-to-back, but one day, we're booked up until July already with that. So, the current rate for that is seventy-five dollars. Again, that's an all-day rate, that's from the time the park opens till she closes at eleven. So, you can see our, our proposal again, four-hour rental, a hundred, non-resident, one-twenty-five all-day, one-fifty, one-seventy-five for the non-resident. With that building and Montgomery Hall, we also require a key deposit, which is fifty dollars. So, if you wanna rent the Garden Center or Montgomery Hall Park, you come to the rec office, there's a form you fill out, it's a rental form, we give you the key on the Friday prior to your rental, then the customer has to bring the key back and get their, their deposit back. Montgomery Hall, it's a little bit higher, but it's based on the, the amenities in Montgomery Hall. When you rent it, it was seventy-five as well, and you can see our price range there, one-fifty, two-hundred non-resident, a hundred and fifty resident, all-day, three-hundred, three-fifty. And if you want additional hours, more than four, we added a thirty-five dollar an hour rate. With that building, you get the activity room and a kitchen, that's two stoves, refrigerators, all that, tables, chairs. Again, a key deposit's required for that. Gypsy Hill Gym, the Gypsy Hill Gym and my next slide, Booker T., are this, are gonna be in the same area. Thirty dollars an hour now, two-seventy-five for the day. So, we're looking at a four-hour rental rate, again, one-twenty, one-sixty, non-resident, all-day, three-hundred, three-fifty for non-resident. With that, Booker T. and the Gypsy Hill Gym, I have staff that are on-site when those activities are going on. And what we'll rent those two facilities out mainly for birthday parties, the majority of them is birthday parties. We do have special events in there as well, with folks will come in, and there's Booker T., same thing. You don't, well, you do have a kitchen at Booker T., so it's similar. Field rentals, Montgomery Hall Park, a hundred dollars a day now. With that hundred dollars, we also prep the field and get it ready for you. When we discuss this, we're, we're putting out a lot of effort for not much return, and it's mostly for tournaments that are, adult tournaments that are private, that are making revenue off of teams that play them. So, we think, based on our market research, the two-hundred for, if it was a Stanton resident that wanted to use it, it's fair, and two-twenty-five. And then if you're using the lights, we added an extra twenty dollars an hour. Right now, you can have a tournament, and the lights, they cut on at six and stay on till eleven, and that's some expense there. Gypsy Hill Pool, we haven't raised the pool rates in twenty years, so we're at three dollars a person now. We have no resident, non-resident fee, it's three bucks. And I'll get to Montgomery Hall, but that's two, it's the same, but you come in, you pay three, years and younger are free, and our pool pass now is fifty for twenty punches. So, what I'm recommending is for the daily fee at Gypsy Hill to be four, you can get a twenty-punch pass for sixty. a 20-punch pass for 60, and you can buy a family season pass, up to five members, for 175, which also gives you membership at Montgomery Hall. So it's not just for specific, for one.
Okay, that was actually one, before we go into other things, so I don't end up with a pile of questions at the end. So the pool pass, you said, we'll go for either. Now, the season pass as well, I saw that there were separate numbers for Montgomery and for Gypsy.
There are. Once I get to the next slide, as far as for the 20-punch pass.
Okay.
Yeah. And maybe I'm wrong. Yeah, we get there. But then there's also, you can see for the non-resident for $5, and if you wanted a punch pass, it's more, and the same for the family membership. The $4 rate is the rate that's in the region, that's what most of our localities are charging. Some are higher for their residents than the $4 rate. So at Montgomery Hall, we're at $2 right now. $35 pool pass, 20 visits, recommending three, punch passes increased, and the membership, again, that's the whole package, you get both pools. And then the non-resident component. Summer camp, this one is important to get an opinion or a feel tonight, because we're advertising our registration next month. One thing we did, you can see city residents are allowed to register a week earlier than our non-residents. That's how it used to be, as long as I've been with the city, and we changed it back in 2006 to no separation, because at that time, we had, Augusta County had all their elementary schools, summer camps, the Y., and there was, we needed customers. So Augusta County no longer offers that service, so I think it's fair that our residents get first shot. And it's a minimal increase, 125, we're at 100 now. 750 for all eight weeks. If you prepaid for all eight weeks, we give you a $50 discount, $10 registration fee. Then you can see the rates, what we're recommending for, for the 125 for a week for resident, 950 prepaid, and the registration fee remains the same. So our summer camp season, it'll start, it'll run for eight consecutive weeks, and you can see our revenue and expenditure numbers. And again, the expenditure line is showing some staff salary increases over the last couple of years.
Well.
And it's a great camp. It really is.
Since you're here asking our opinion.
I am.
This is the one, I mean, all of the other fee increases, I absolutely understand, we're well behind the curve on them. But I mean, we've been talking about what we can specifically do to help with childcare, with housing, things like that. And this camp in particular is one of the very few affordable options for families to, that allows people to work, frankly, to go to work even. I'm absolutely fine with the non-resident fee, because our taxes help support this. But I personally just don't like the idea of raising the fee for city residents on that. And I'm saying this as a parent who last year spent three and a half hours in line to get spot number 50 out of 65 for my son's age group on that. And I had asked, well, you and I have talked about this, I'd asked parking and rec employees to look at that, and it was about 35% non-residents were in this camp as well last year. And so that difference in signup period will definitely help with that space. But also, it's just my belief, and I don't know about the rest of council, but I'd rather keep this at that $100 per person week for residents on that, and just take the small hit on that one, just as something we can do to help provide childcare in the city.
Yeah. What about the non-resident rate?
The non-resident rate, I'm, you know, we can't, we need to draw a line somewhere, you know, on that, and I absolutely agree with that, with that space in between signup periods, because our taxpayers help support this.
Oh, yeah.
And the families that are using it have already helped support it. So I, you know, I don't, I'm fine with a non-resident fee to help recoup some of that cost. Okay.
You were talking about opinions that this pay increase is going to hurt a lot of people's pockets as far as summer camp for their kids. Because already they might be paying for, you know, extra daycare during the week after school, but a $200 increase, that's a lot.
Yeah, that's a chunk.
It's a lot. We can figure out some other way.
Well, I think, I think a non-resident rate should increase.
Well, yeah, but.
I mean, we have to come to some understanding of what that number is going to be, or?
Okay. So currently, Counselor, was it finished? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so previously, just so I understand it, so previously, it's been at 100.
Correct.
And you're recommending that it goes to 125?
Right.
And Vice Mayor Arrowood is recommending that it stay at 100?
Right.
I think I'm hearing that he wants the resident fees to stay 175, not change, and then you're comfortable with the non-resident?
I'm comfortable with the non-resident fee. I'm not in any way tied to that 150 number, if anyone has any other suggestions on that. But I just see this as a specific taxpayer-supported benefit for living in the city on that. And we can't do anything, I mean, as you said, Augusta, our neighbors used to offer these in the schools there. There are other options, but as far as I know, I don't want to call them out specifically, but a particular one on Coulter, it costs about twice as much as, say, if you're not a member on that too. And it's.
It's 170 if you're a member.
Okay.
The non-member, I'd have to find it, I think it was 2 something.
Something like, in my mind, it was about.
200.
Twice as much.
If you're a non-member, it's 200. If you're a member, it's 170.
Yeah. So I just think again that this is just such an important thing that we can offer for our families with young children, you know?
But also, there are scholarships for the one on Coulter.
Correct.
That's true, yes. Yes, it isn't always rec rate, you know?
And we do not offer scholarships, so.
True.
Yeah, that's, I don't never know the why to turn anyone away, so that.
Right.
Yeah.
Counselor Campbell, did you have to add something?
I agree with holding the residential rate and the proposed non-residential increase in the one-week early registration and see how it plays out for 2025.
Well, I think the, given the city residents, the first week is going to eliminate what you experienced when you show up. And I can tell you, you show up at 6:00 in the morning on the day of registration, and the line is all the way to the top office.
Yeah, some people did, too. They would trade off family members standing in line and all of that, and I was standing there thinking, we've got to fix this.
And I felt bad for coming in and opening the door and shutting it, you know, 8:00.
Feels like lottery for childcare.
Right.
Potentially, we could, you could fill up all your slots with city residents with this differential.
I would say that's a good chance.
Unless you reserve some, you know, some number for non-residents.
If it fills with city residents, then we're full.
Yeah, I mean, if there's truly unused extra space.
And we will, we will have 100 campers.
Welcome to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's no doubt in my mind that we will have 100, what we can accommodate.
And what constricts, what constricts the size of the camps? Is it staffing? Is it facilities?
Well, it's staffing, and yeah, it's how much we can handle. You know, we have the gym, and the garden centers for the smaller, smaller guys.
Garden Center in particular is a much smaller place.
Yeah, and it's, it really stresses out the staff to add more children to the camp, bring in more staff, and especially in Gypsy Hill Gym. That's, we're comfortable at 100. That's doable. And for the last year, in the last several years, actually, we've had 100 kids every week that have paid. Now, maybe some of them are not there the particular days, but, and it's our budget for staff, too. I mean, we have a lot of staff that work camp. We follow the, we're not required to be licensed childcare site, but we follow the guidelines in regards to the ratio of staff to kids and all that. And we're not required, because we're a government entity, and we don't need to do all that, but we do follow all the guidelines.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions before we?
I don't think I had another slide there. I think that was it.
I agree that it's a really important service. So you're saying you're not comfortable expanding it beyond the 100 participants right now? I'm just thinking about whether a small.
Well, certainly, we could discuss it. I mean, I can, yeah, we can definitely have a discussion with staff, but it comes to space, too.
Space.
And the Garden Center is a smaller space. The majority of our camp kids are at the Gypsy Hill Gym. I think we have 70 at the Gypsy Hill Gym and 30 at the Garden Center. And the Garden Center is the tiny guy, so it gets crazy.
And that gets into staff ratio, too.
It does.
Age on that, too. And I mean, you couldn't, look at how much they make, depending on like how many you're supposed to watch, and I think, I wouldn't do that for five times that much. But I am not a professional childcare provider.
With only a few minutes left in this presentation, is everybody feeling comfortable with Vice Mayor Arrowood's recommendation to stay at 100, open a week early for city residents? And?
Yeah.
And raise the, and raise the cost for non-residents? Is there, are there any other recommendations for that?
So as far as the rest of the fees, we have some time to think about that. And so when we, we can come back to that as part of the budget, and if there is interest in finding a way to maybe increase the offering, we could put a budget proposal in, I could ask Chris to prepare something for you all to think about during the budget process. I mean, I think, I think we're looking at staffing and resources and maybe space, so we can talk about that, if that's of interest. Does that sound fair, Chris?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sure does.
So, so I'm hearing, so we can pursue, go forward with the camp fees as proposed, and then we'll come back to the other fees during the budget process.
So 100 for the city resident, and the non-resident fee was good?
Uh huh, yeah, that's what I heard.
Well, I did have, as we got to cover question, I did have one question on the facilities. New is splitting it into a four-hour separate thing on that. Do you, is that a reaction to like you've seen that you could have re-rented it for another four hours in a day period?
No, it just seems to be, what we were finding in our research was every locality had a four-hour rental. So then I went to my office manager, and I said, what, how long, you know, are people in the, she said, the majority are four to five hours. If it's a family reunion, it might start at 6:00, they're out by 10:00.
If I say all day, what is?
All day is all day. It's from 6:00 in the morning till 11:00.
Okay, 11:00 PM.
Yeah, it's all day.
All right.
Well, thank you, Mr. Tuttle. We appreciate the information.
Yes, ma'am.
And we look forward to continuing this conversation into the budget season.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, let's keep going. We will now discuss the FY 2024, end-of-the-year general fund, financial overview, and capital improvement plan. Ms. Beauregard.
Speaking of the budget, Ms. Moyers is here this evening. This is kind of continuing the conversation that was started back in December about carryover in year-end, and just with kind of a repeat of December's session with a little bit more information. So no action on this this evening, but we'll be looking for some guidance from you all as far as the next meeting and action for that meeting. So.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards and Council.
Good evening, Ms. Moyers. Good to see you.
So this is the same number that you would have seen in December. The first few slides are just going to be review. The carryover for FY 24 is about 5.4 million. And I just wanted to remind you how we got to that number. The major variances are there, with the biggest share being property taxes, which is real estate and personal property. And this is just our fund balance, carryover history. The designated column, the $3 million, that's a large increase from the prior year. That is mostly V-dot reimbursable funds that are being carried over and will be used in the following year. So the biggest recommendation coming out of the carryover is the CIP funding, 2.891. That's for the FY 25 CIP. As you know, the last few years since the pandemic, we are relying on carryover to fund our CIP. The only three reserves that we're funding out of the operating budget are the three that you, I believe, set up in the 2024 budget process for Union Town, West End, and the library. And then there are a few small amounts that this was appropriated with the FY 23 carryover, where they did not get encumbered, so they just came right back in the FY 24 carryover that we're recommending for reappropriation, the valley supportive housing, the wharf tree replacement, and the entrance corridor overlay. So the next couple of slides is just a review of what is in that FY 25 CIP. Much of it is reserve-type of funding. This is, I believe, the second year we're funding the CAD RMS system for police department. The first year was at 100,000. This is 375, and I believe there's another 375 in FY 26. And according to early estimates, that is what it costs. We won't know for sure until we get further along. And the next biggest item there is the $600,000 for the public use, Parks and Rec Public Use Facilities. So according to our fund balance policy, funds in excess of the safety net are, the first consideration is given to City Capital Improvement Fund. So they do not recommend that you use it for ongoing expenditures or operations, but to use it for one-time capital expenditure purposes. So we have the option to appropriate this carryover tonight on Budget Amendment 3, but you don't have to. It can be saved for a future budget amendment. If you do nothing, it rolls into FY 25's carryover and becomes part of that number.
But we're talking about the 2,431?
Technically, we're talking about the whole entire thing, but I'm hoping I'll get your blessing that we can fund the CIP, and I will bring it back on Budget Amendment Number 3, which gets introduced at the next council meeting, and those three smaller items. But then we have this remaining 2.4 that I'm going to talk about, that is kind of what's up and above the CIP funding. So these are the things I'm going to run through, and these are just some things that came up during CIP discussion, when we're getting that document together that will be introduced at the Planning Commission next week. These are some of the projects that kind of stuck out as priorities. But first, let's talk about safety net. So safety net, we're currently at 16.5%. There was a goal set a couple of years ago, before my time, of trying to get to 18%. And I don't think it's been raised since June of '22, I believe, was the last time we changed that to the 16.5. The GFPA recommendation is two months of operating expenditures, which is just slightly above where we're at, at the 16.67. Each half a percent that we were to raise it would cost us 367,516, and that's based on the FY 25 budget. And so you cannot use this for economic slowdown or anything like that. It has to be a major catastrophe, and then you have to have a plan to repay it in 36 months. So there's, we don't touch this, we don't plan on touching this. It's there for drastic emergencies.
So that we are trying to get to the goal of 18%? Or we want to?
Well, that was set by a previous council, so we can, just looking for guidance from you guys, if you're interested in increasing it, or if you just want to stay at the 16.5 for now, that is solely going to be based on your recommendation of what you want to do. As a finance person, I'm always in favor of increasing it a little bit, because it just shows that you're healthier financial-wise, and it looks good if you ever go out for a credit rating for bonds and things like that. But we're, we're right there at the recommendation. It would be nice to be a little bit above instead of a little bit below, but in the grand scheme of things, I think we're okay. So the first project, the reserve I wanted to talk to you about is the Parks and Rec Public Use Facilities. So this is where we have been putting our interest that we earned in the CIP. A lot of that is interest that we earned in our ARPA funds. This is also where we had a $600,000, I think in '24, like another 600 for '25. So assuming that we can fund that CIP on the next budget amendment and the interest for FY 25, we'll be at about $4 million in this reserve. The projects there on the right are how we plan to use this reserve. The Gypsy Hill Park pool house replacement, upgrading the bathrooms in Gypsy Hill Park, Montgomery Hall Park pool house improvements and bathroom improvements, and pump house improvements. I will not know how much all of these projects cost until they actually go out to bid, so I can't give a recommendation on if we need more or not. So just keep that in mind.
I'm sorry, could you, Ms. Moyers, could you say where the pump house improvements are?
I believe it's to the back of, like, the bathroom area is part of it. There's some structural issues, that's, it's going to cost a little more than what they intend. There's some structural issues that's it's going to cost a little more than what they intended when they started doing it. So that is one that we're not sure if we're going to bid it with the pool house and bathroom stuff, or if we're going to make it an add alternate.
I guess for the pump house, just for anyone who's listening that has is thinking, what on earth is that? That's it's not literally a pump house. It's what was historically the pump house. It's that one building you see right near the entrance to Gypsy Hill Park that really Stone Wall Brigade Band mostly uses.
I believe so.
On that. But yeah, it's it's it looks nice on the outside, but the inside it looks like plywood and broken plaster.
Okay, that thing.
That thing.
Thank you.
So the next, um. Project, and this is going to be a a new reserve that we're recommending that we start funding in the F Y, starting with F Y twenty six, um, C I P. With the intention of trying to get to three to four million for renovations of the Fire Station One to do a roof reconstruction and adding additional space for firefighters. There is a balance in that fund currently that was initially put there for the fire station roof. We will be using that to do the door replacement since we could not use ARPA funds to do that. It will have to be rebid and we'll pull the funds for the doors from there. And then we'll start saving for future repairs.
Yes, you have a question on this one.
Yep.
So if we're going to invest that much into Fire Station Number One, like what's the, what's the the thinking of lifespan, extending the lifespan of the building? Because I, I mean, we were, at one point, we were looking at a brand new facility somewhere. So I know there's concerns with that from a floodplain standpoint, but.
I know that they would love a new facility. I just don't see it in our.
I mean, I think it's ideal from a location standpoint. That's, I mean, that's where it should be. But, um, but do we, we think we're comfortable three to four million is going to? Get us what we need for at least a.
I'm not confident enough to answer that question for you. I think it would largely depend on. Who we hire to design it and what they find when they're they're actually getting into it and going through it. So the next one is the Police Department relocation, calling it Phase One. Just kind of starting a reserve in case we get to the the point where there is a parcel of land that we can purchase, that we would have cash on hand to do that with instead of incurring debt. It would take us a while to get to where we need to be with that. But the thinking is we start saving now and hopefully in the future, when we can get there, we'll have, we can fund a lot of this project with cash instead of taking out debt. And then these are some other things that have come up. The V dot Richmond Road Roundabout and Road Diet. I believe you heard an update on that and how the costs are drastically higher than it was originally estimated.
Yeah.
And so we are still working with V dot to determine what the best course of action is with that information. So I'm not sure if that's how you want to spend your carryover, but that is one that is on the table for discussion. The same with the V dot sidewalk projects. Those estimates are now higher than they originally were. Not sure what the the best course of action there, but there will be more information coming.
Do you know any numbers on the Edgewood? Sidewalk?
I I think the last estimate was four point seven million.
Couple mil, it's more than.
I think the original was a million, something, and now it's four point seven. A third of a mile.
That's made out of concrete, right?
Yeah. I believe, um, when we met with the V dot, it was a third of a mile for four point seven million dollars. Yeah. And then there was a, there's a possible grant match request for the Amtrak Station Improvements. That has been discussed lately.
Yeah, and I'll just say they have submitted their grants for this already. I we provided, we, I sent you all the letter that I sent on the city's behalf. So I did not promise a grant match yet. We're still finding information out about this project. And there's a meeting coming up about that, so I'll have more to share in the next week or so about that in particular and the V dot projects as well. So, yeah, more forthcoming.
So other than my recommendation to fund the F Y twenty five C I P and the three smaller items that need to be reappropriated. I don't have a clear direction on what the greatest need is because there's just so many. So I think my recommendation, if you are interested, is to appropriate it to the undesigned it C I P account. That would still require council approval to bring it out of undesigned it for a specific project. But you can do it all in one meeting where if you don't appropriate it now and you want to appropriate it later, that will take two meetings with a public hearing to get that done. So it just allows you a little bit more flexibility to have it in undesigned it. And then when I, when the need becomes apparent, like your area of greatest need, then you can bring it out in one meeting with your consensus. And then other priorities, I just wanted to hear from you if you have any suggestions.
I mean, I'll just go ahead and say that I think everyone up here would agree that. Shelburne Phase Two is a priority.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we obviously have a ton of capital needs here as we just saw, but I I want to make sure that that's stays in the forefront of those needs.
And I will mention that schools, they do have the same process where they have carryover and their first priority is their school C I P fund.
We have so many projects that we're waiting for a good estimate on, so we can't knowingly assign anything yet. So I I agree with your suggest.
Yeah, I agree.
Way to access.
Any others?
Good bid, not estimate, excuse me.
Yes.
Okay, so Jesse, can you just explain one more time for everybody that this evening you'd like us, or you recommend that we sort of, we give you the direction to?
For the head nod to go ahead and to add the C I P funding to the Budget Amendment Number Three. And the reappropriation of those three smaller items from the F Y twenty three carryover. And then to either not make a decision on the remaining two point four or appropriate it to undesigned it until we know how we want to use it.
Thank you.
I do have a question for the Police Department relocation. Does staff actively always just want to look out for opportunities? Is that?
Yeah, I feel like they've given up and they're sad about it, but yeah.
Once in a while, we'll think of something and and usually it's not any good. But, you know, we're, we are on the lookout for things because it's just, we really need to try to get them out of the basement. It's really unacceptable down there. They're just busting at the seams and it's, we're keeping it together. And City Hall could use the space. I mean, we could repurpose that space for other city departments that it's desperately needed. So, um, yeah, if anybody has any.
Unfortunately, the J J N D R courts have kind of leapfrogged them and so.
That's, yeah, but.
It's going to be delayed for quite a few years.
Yeah, but as as Ms. Moyers said, this is the time to put the reserve aside and to keep it in in our minds. If that is, you know, a high, we we believe it's a high priority. You obviously have to decide if it's a high priority, but. Yeah.
Why don't we go one at a time? And we'll start with the undead, um, putting the funds in the undesigned it, uh, C I P.
I guess we're all good with that.
Yeah.
We're all good with that.
Anyone against that?
Yes, anyone against that? So we'll nod on that. And then, Ms. Moyers, the one of the, the second one was the three items that were not encumbered during the.
Yes, the Valley Supportive Housing, the Entrance Corridor Overlay and the Wharf Tree Replacement to kind of. Get the sidewalks back down to where.
Yeah.
We're supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
That one, um, we, when we did the appropriation with the F Y twenty three carrier, we did it to the Parks and Rec Fund, which is an annual fund that disappears if you don't get it spent. And it's just going to take him some time.
Yeah.
Figure out what to do there. So this time, when I appropriate that, it's going to be the C I P fund, which means it will sit there until he can actually spend it on that particular project.
That happened. So we could see this again next year.
No, I want to put it in the C I P.
You won't see it again after this. I mean, you'll see it at the next meeting, but after that, you will never see it again.
All right. Not a head nod on the, uh, reappropriating for, I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, we're good with that.
And is everybody okay with funding the F Y twenty five C I P on Budget Amendment Number Three? That I will bring back to you to be introduced at the next council meeting.
There's. I think we see good head nod. Yeah, there's a consensus here.
And just to be clear, you're okay with appropriating the F Y twenty five C I P interest to the Parks and Rec Fund like we did the prior year?
Can you tell me about how much that is? Is this on here? I'm sorry.
I think it was six hundred, let's see.
Hundred odd thousand.
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I think I only estimated it through March, just because I wanted to be a little conservative because rates are declining.
No, I do.
They're not as high as they were in F Y twenty four.
Right.
So that's about what we should earn in interest in the C I P fund through about March.
Those are huge, huge numbers, though, so I I'm okay with that. Is everyone okay with putting that into the?
And a majority of that is money that we're earning on our ARPA funds that are sitting there until we actually spend them. They've been encumbered, but we still have to to spend the money. We have two years to do that.
And Jesse, just to be sure, also the safety net, the sixteen point five percent sitting there, that's earning interest as well? Is that an interest earning?
It is. Um, it, the interest, I believe, goes to the general fund.
I was going to ask the same question about the undesigned C I P funds. Is that earning interest as well? It's.
Yes. The undesigned it, the amount, you're talking about the amount we're talking about tonight, the unassigned.
Yeah, the current one forty seven.
It's earning interest for the general fund, which is in our general fund budget. We did, I think we budgeted about a little half a million. We're probably earn more than that, but we just could not predict where interest rates were going to be last spring. They're declining, but not too fast. So it's nice to be earning some some interest on our funds.
Moyers, you think you have the information that you need from us?
Yes, I believe so.
Great, terrific. Well, thank you for the work on this.
All right, thanks.
Alrighty, moving along, we will now have, uh, we'll move on to an update on the refuse modernization initiative and Ms. Beauregard.
Yes. Um, okay, so, um, wow, this is exciting. Long time coming tonight. Mr. Dave Irvin is here this evening. He's been Public Works Director well over a year, actually, but then he was named Director a few months ago. So we had to put this on hold for a little bit. We had staffing changes at Public Works and needed to get through some things first. So here we are. I think we've got a plan to put in front of you this evening. And, um, you know, I'm going to let Mr. Irvin walk you through it. You can ask any questions you would like. So we'll go from there. So I'm going to stop talking. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Edwards, Vice Mayor Arrowhead and Council. Uh, I will be giving a presentation about where we are with our refuse modernization initiative. And let me figure out exactly how to do this. You got it. So, all right, starting off with a question. So when do I get my new trash can? That is a question that I'm sure you all have heard. I certainly have heard it. I know staff has heard it. And it's a question that has been asked and continues to be asked. And currently, the answer is new year, new bin. And that's posted on the city website and out here in the hall. Well, guess what? It's a new year. So, um. Now, uh, so I only have about twenty minutes in here, so I'm going to try to get it all in. There's a lot to cover. Uh, if you do have questions, feel free to ask. Another question that has been asked is, uh, why is change needed? If it's not broke, don't fix it. Well, staff and myself, we believe that it is broke and it does need to be fixed. So there's several, at least eight bullets right there, but we can provide a lot more, uh, information, um, that justify the change. But I'll just highlight some of the very key ones. This aligns with the city organizational value of being environmentally conscious. It encourages, we tried to put together a program that encourages options to reduce the waste and increase recycling. Now, with that, that combines with the next bullet item, uh, which is combat ever increasing landfill cost. The landfill costs continue to go up and they're not going to be coming back down. In fact, it can get even worse. So what can we do as a city, uh, to help defray some of those cost increases? And one way is to reduce the waste that actually is going to landfill and being landfilled. So, uh, we've tried to put together an environmentally robust program. And we're always looking out for safety for our crews and our customers. And, uh, we're looking at strengthening our accountability and being able to, uh, utilize some tools, techniques for optimizing our collection routes and our collection efficiency. Kyle or, yeah, I don't know which button to press here. So let's talk about the funding. So in twenty twenty three, we sought, uh, funding through the ARPA funds. And we were able to secure eight hundred and ninety thousand for this program. And so the cost allocations are shown there of how we have spent. I'll correct that because as Jesse had mentioned in her last presentation, that money has been encumbered and we have up to two years to actually spend it. But the cost allocations include the initial survey that we did, uh, related to some other costs related to that. The tippers, all of our can, all of our trucks have been outfitted with the tippers. Uh, guys have already been using them. The cans, obviously the largest cost item, seven hundred thousand, uh, for the cans themselves. And just to make sure we spent every penny of the eight hundred and ninety thousand. This is something a little new and different, self-compacting bins. Now I have a slide dedicated to that where I can go into a little bit more detail.
Dave, what about the software costs, the annual software?
Right now, uh, that is, we are under an agreement to use that software as, uh, under a three month program. Should we, uh, want to move forward with it? I'm very confident that we will. That will come out of the operating budget, the environmental fund operating budget.
How much?
Um, I don't know. Uh, we'll have to, do you recall, Jesse? Okay. Okay, I I can get you that number, Jeff. So our approach to this whole initiative was to look at the different pieces, parts to this program. And some of you have heard this before, the physical components, the tippers, the cans and the software. I am happy to mention something about the software, uh, that we've, behind the scenes, the software folks, Rubicon. Have been building the database, uh, that goes with the software. And we will be going live with that on January twenty eighth. Pilot testing, beta testing, uh, that particular software. We also have the administrative components and we have to have a policy that matches with the new things that we'll be doing. So that has been in the works, communications, big thanks to Josh, uh, for trying to get the communications out as we roll along. And then the operational components roll out and then, um, as we roll out this program. There will be some mistakes. We might deliver the wrong size can to the wrong address. So there'll be some vetting and some troubleshooting as a part of that. To help with this endeavor, we formed a trash committee. This is interdepartmental. So big thanks to city manager's office, I T. Obviously, Public Works, uh, and Finance. It was, we would meet on a regular basis. And a lot of those thoughts, what our goals are shown in the two clouds at the bottom. We kept wanting to maximize service and minimize costs, but also emphasize where we could. The three Rs, reduce, reuse and recycle. But over our heads, we kept having to remember that the funds needed to be encumbered by the end of December, and they were. But it gets back to that same old question. So when do I get my new can? Well, what we were found is we were trying to apply a one size fits all, uh, approach to this. And it wasn't working very well and we were be getting bogged down, uh, delayed. So what we needed to do to get these cans out to the folks was break this up into manageable tasks. So we did. And we have at the top, the weekly regular waste for residential customers, that is early spring, twenty twenty five. The monthly yard waste for residential customers, that is a new service. And that will be in late spring or as close to when we complete the rollout for the regular waste. We will start immediately behind that with monthly yard waste. I have another slide dedicated to that, uh, that we will discuss what what is that? So what was bogging us down is the central business district. This is not a one size fits all. We had challenges down there, not, I mean, space, we're, we're aware of the challenges, space limitations, aesthetic considerations. S D D A is a, an important stakeholder. They've had their own personnel changes. So rather than let that bog us down and delay this program anymore, uh, we are kicking that out as a future phase. So currently, what is the status? It is the status quo. So at this time, there will be no. So at this time, there will be no policy or collection changes, uh, in the CBD or those commercial areas. So I'll jump into it. Regular waste for our residential customers. A lot of features to this program. And I'll just go down the list here. Uh, one city provided can per residential unit. Now, starting with that initial survey, we started asking right away our, uh, citizens to respond with their desired can size. So, uh, they did, a lot of them did. But that effort continued over the last, uh, several months when folks would just come up and pay their water bill. We would ask them those questions and say, what, what size can? So we've been tracking that and that is going into the database, uh, the Rubicon database. Uh, they had the choice between the forty-five gallon can and ninety-five gallon can. And for those who don't respond, we plan on supplying them with the larger, uh, the larger can. Now, um, there will be a transition period here so people can evaluate their own, uh, waste volumes. But so if there's someone who chose a small can, we can, we can give, turn around and replace it with a large can and vice versa. That, uh, if we give them the default, uh, ninety-five gallon can and, no, no, I want a small one. Well, fine. All it takes is a call to Public Works and, and we will take care of that. Some things I want to mention about this particular can, uh, green body, green lid, and it will be, uh, emboldened with the trash-only designation. That's important. Only trash will go in to that can. And, uh, the, our customers have to realize that whatever they put in that can, it is going to go to the landfill and be landfilled. Only the city can, uh, the city issued can will be serviced. This isn't gonna happen overnight, getting everyone their new cans. The vendor has promised, uh, two weeks, but, um, I have to be a little pessimistic here. Um, and so, uh, allow for some extra time, given the, the, the timing of this rollout. So there will be a transition, uh, transition period in this. That gives us some opportunities to refine the program, correct some of those misdeliveries or a misassigned account. Uh, it gives us to opt, us, uh, staff, uh, opportunity as well as our customers to evaluate their true waste volume. Uh, one of the best features about this is, uh, this is no added fees, uh, for this. Existing fees. Here's something new and exciting. It's the yard waste for residential customers. One way to try to reduce that volume of what is going now to the landfill and being landfilled is yard waste. So that's the goal is to provide our customers another option, uh, to be environmentally conscious, exercise, uh, that. So the distinguishing thing here wa, uh, is the can itself. It will still have a green body, but with a tan lid and it will also be designated yard waste only. Okay? And so our goals there are to reduce the volume in the regular trash cans. Um, I think everyone's in agreement, yard waste is being, uh, wasted, no pun intended, by being in the landfill. And what we do deliver to the landfill, it'll still go to the landfill, uh, but it'll be mulched, uh, for, for reuse. How's this program gonna work? It's gonna operate on the basis of a customer opt-in program. Not everyone is going to get a yard waste can. Not everyone needs one. Not everyone wants one. So it's gonna be an opt-in program. Um, a lot of folks have mulching mowers or they have their own compost and backyard compost now. And there, there's not gonna be an interest for that. So they can opt in by, uh, going online and, and filling out a form or simply calling Public Works. What they will get out of the deal is a one, uh, one city provided, uh, can per opt-in request and it's, it will be a ninety-five gallon can. So when do we go get it? Uh, this is, the first Wednesdays is what we're planning on. First Wednesdays of every month, we will have all of our trash trucks, uh, roll through the city and collect whoever has opted in, uh, to this program. Another good feature here is that there are no added fees. However, there will be a fifty-dollar refundable, uh, deposit for this can.
Dave, this is a new feature that wasn't originally anticipated. What led you to add that? And what do you think is gonna, uh, what, was it, was there demand from people with the, with the surveys? Was that something they mentioned a lot or?
It started with the survey. Yes, there were questions and even requests for something of this nature. And also, uh, with the increasing, uh, landfill cost, uh, we, we kept coming back to that question, what can we do? How can we help our citizens help us? Uh, and this was the answer. And, um, so this is the route we've gone, uh, and, and would like to move forward with. And, uh, I personally think it will be, uh, a small measure of success.
What happens to that material, the compost? Is there a giant compost pile that the city has somewhere?
Basically, yes. At the landfill, there's a designated area for brush and sticks and branches and yard clippings and, and all that.
Then does it get ground up and used for a mulch?
Yes, yes. Now, currently, it, it gets, uh, uh, used at the landfill. Uh, but the option would be available to turn around and, uh, give it, perhaps sell it back to, uh, customers, uh, as mulch.
This is separate from the, from the leaf collection in the fall.
Correct.
Entirely. And also, if, if this is being mulched, uh, are you putting it into the can with nothing on it? Are you, because you wouldn't, wouldn't wanna have plastic bags in there. Would you use entirely, ask people to use entirely the paper bags?
Um, so, uh, we're not exactly sure in what form we're gonna get this, but the key feature here is that your regular trash cannot be in that can. We can't intermix the two. Now, if someone wants to throw away their yard clippings and they put it in a bag and they put it in the big green can, we're not the tank cops. We're not gonna go open all the bags and find out who's getting rid of a bunch of sticks in the regular trash. That's why it's important that our customers know that if they put it in the green can with the green lid, it will be landfilled. It's in a way to encourage them to opt into the yard waste program and use it. But if we find that, uh, they are using that, uh, for trash, uh, then, uh, we won't be taking those cans. Uh, it has to be segregated. Absolutely. A hundred percent.
But the expectation is just to fill, fill lawn debris straight into the bed as is?
Yes, absolutely. Got a bundle of sticks or whatever, uh, you know, that's why we're going with the ninety-five gallon can. Forty-five gallon can isn't big enough for, for, for that. Uh, and it's a once a month, once a month collection. So what we anticipate since we're rolling this thing out in spring is that it's gonna start off fairly small. And it's not really until we get into the summer months that I expect the volume to pick up, uh, and people, and as the word gets out and people start to utilize this uh, as, as a legitimate, uh, and beneficial service.
Now, I would see somebody instead of bagging their grass clippings, just dumping it right in the can. And then, and then once a month, the tipper will come over and pick it up and then everything will just get dumped in the truck that will go directly to the large yard waste pile at the landfill.
There is an education component that is a part of this and, and communication component. Uh, so we will have to educate them on the, uh, the proper use of the yard waste can. And so that, that's another reason for the transition period. Uh, we have a transition period for the regular waste. We will likely have a transition period for the yard waste.
Something to think about for you and Josh. You might look at community partners for this to advise you and help you get the word out to champion the program, thinking about like Shenandoah Green.
Obviously Shenandoah Green and, uh, uh, there, there's a variety of ways that we can get that word out. Not the least of which is when we deliver the regular waste cans, uh, I'm kinda getting ahead of myself here. But, uh, when we deliver the regular waste cans, they're gonna be given a pamphlet, uh, introducing this as a new option. So it's sort of like the direct marketing approach, uh, for, uh, communicating, uh, this, this as a new service.
And Dave, one more question. There's just been a couple of references to no added fees. Remind me, what is the city's base residential refuse?
I wish I could tell you.
Ms. Moir knows.
Residential price is forty-eight dollars and two cents every two months, so twenty-four oh one a month.
Thank you. All right, I'll move on, uh, in the interest of time. Um, uh, here, here's something new and a little different and it's heavy trash. We've always had a, a heavy trash period, uh, in the city. And currently, it's two weeks in the spring. What we'd like to move to is, uh, starting, uh, this year is one week in spring and one week in fall. Uh, no added fees for that. Adding the extra week is basically splitting it up into more manageable efforts. Uh, as is with the two-week period, uh, it's almost like an all-hands-on-deck. We have to really gear up for it. Now, we were fortunate enough this past year, we allowed for the two weeks, planned for the two weeks and guys were done in about, uh, a little over a week. Uh, it varies year to year, the amount of bulky items that, that our customers put out. We want to give them an opportunity. Everyone does spring cleaning. Uh, a lot of folks do fall cleanup. Uh, so this is just a, a way to better, uh, provide this service in a better fashion to our customers. Under the funding slide for the ARPA funds, I had mentioned self-compacting bins. This is a pretty cool thing. We had a little extra money to spend and had to spend it fast. We aren't reinventing the wheel here. Um, we actually stole this from Harrisonburg. Uh, but these are solar-powered compactors. The goal here is to reduce, use these, reduce litter in downtown areas and parks. Uh, and obviously to help, you know, improve the aesthetics. The neat thing, there's a, there's a little compactor inside this can, uh, and you can get triple the volume. So this is like a fifty-gallon can and you can, uh, get as much as, uh, a hundred and fifty gallons into it by automatically, uh, compacting it. There's a little LED light on there that shows when it's full. You can get really sophisticated with this. Now, this, uh, introductory, introductory program, uh, we're not gonna do that. Uh, you can get this thing actually tied to software to, you know, ping your phone and let you know when it's, uh, full. Uh, but for right, that, obviously at a cost. So what we've done, we've purchased sixteen of these cans with the idea to place them, uh, in some of these areas. Another neat feature with these, and you see the three examples there, uh, they have panels, wraparound panels that where you can, uh, apply, uh, photographs or any type of graphics that, that you want. So to, uh, help it be more appealing to our visitors, uh, and, and citizens alike, uh, we can make it an attractive self-composting bin. So that's a new feature. Okay, another round of questions that we have gotten, uh, on a regular basis. What do we do with our old cans? And what about extra trash? Okay. Old cans, we highly encourage reuse and, and you can, uh, you, you can do that. One item, and this is to help with our recycle program. You see a picture of our recycle center there up at Public Works. You can store your recyclables in these cans, in your old cans and use them to cart up your, your recyclables up to Public Works. I do that with, uh, uh, an old can that I have. I live in the county, but I take my recyclables to the Berry Farm Room site and I'm using an old can to do it. It works great. Other items, uh, or options are to create a compost bin, rain barrel, uses yard tool storage. I have another old can where I have sports equipment. I keep it down in the garage. The, there is a myriad of options available for what to do with the old cans. A lot of the other uses are identified in the FAQ section on the city website. Now, as a last resort, uh, one of the other things that we've heard relative to old cans, these folks have been waiting for this program. And I've heard from plenty of folks, uh, and I know for a fact that some of these old cans out there are held together with duct tape and twine. And they, they probably cannot reuse them. So they won't. And as, uh, we will collect the old cans as long as they're actually marked, this is trash, this can is trash, please take it. We will. Okay? Extra trash. Uh, we are providing the one can with no added fees. We all know that on occasion, there are events, uh, got the Super Bowl coming up, there, uh, there could be, uh, the church picnic, whatever it may be. But there are, are occasions when folks will have extra trash. So again, we're not reinventing the wheel here. We stole this one from Harrisonburg and other surrounding communities. Bag tags. Okay? That is a, uh, industrial strength sticker that you can stick on your plastic, uh, bag. So that on those occasions, when you have a little bit of extra trash, we roll by, we see the, uh, appropriate sticker, uh, affixed to that, uh, bag and we will collect it, uh, and move, and move on. So basically, if you have the extra trash, what we're asking folks is to bag it and tag it and we'll take it.
And these bag tags will, uh, you receive?
Well, they are, uh, eventually they will be, uh, a purchase, a pay-as-you-go, uh, with a nominal tag fee of a dollar per, uh, a dollar each, which is a very cheap cost, uh, to get rid of a bag of garbage.
I think we talked about five initially, giving them away.
Well, yeah, so again, as a part of, uh, educating and, uh, helping our customers, when we roll out the residential cans, our plan is to give them, free of charge, uh, a handful, uh, number's still debated, but, uh, probably a minimum of five stickers. Uh, we might go to ten. I don't, I don't know, but it's to help them, have a way to get rid of their trash and get used to this modification of our service to them. So yes, uh, the, the, the tags will, um, uh, be delivered, uh, when we do the cans, uh, the rollout of the cans. For some folks, uh, I happen to know a few large families, uh, that may not be enough. So folks who actually need a second can can get one, but that does result in an additional fee to the trash bill. And that fee is twelve dollars a month. Okay? Now, we don't intend on, uh, uh, moving forward with that immediately. We have this transition period where I would like for our customers, and this is a part of the communication, to evaluate their storage needs. And in some ways, it, it comes down to being a, uh, economic question. Do I just buy a lot of the bag tags and I'll, I'll be okay with that? Uh, I, I happen to know one family that that will not help. Uh, and they will, that, they may be the first ones to call for a second can. But again, how you ask for a second can, there will be a form online that folks, and this will be communicated in the, in the pamphlet that we, uh, give out for the regular can rollout. But they can, uh, request a second can. Uh, then there's a little bit of logistics to get the billing set up right. And then a short time to have that second can delivered.
On the flip side, for less trash, is there any consideration about reducing the standard fee for people if they take the smaller standard can as their single can?
Um, there was some discussion about that, but, uh, I don't think it went very far. So it sort of gets back to the cost of the can itself. So mentioned that we're spending seven hundred thousand dollars on cans. We're ordering twelve thousand cans. That's a lot. And, but the average cost that, that can, the large one is about fifty-four dollars and the smaller can is about forty-five dollars, uh, something to that effect. So for the second can, we thought that the fifty gallon or, uh, the, uh, twelve dollars a month works out to the, you know, forty-eight per, I mean, shoot, twenty-four for billing cycle. And definitely cheaper than the cost of a, uh, a can you can buy at Lowe's or wherever.
Alrighty, well, um, Mr. Irvin, we have about two more minutes and.
Well, this is, I think that's the last one. Oh, the answer to the question, the more definitive answer. So when do I get my new trash can? March the third.
Okay, perfect.
Dave, uh, this is a question I've, I've, I've asked before and I've asked at each stage of it and even when we're in our timeout period for it and all of that. When I drive around town, the most common size can I see is neither of those. It's what they call sixty-four, right in between. And I've been told we're looking into that. If we can get that, it was up in the air about supplier. The cans have not been ordered yet.
Uh, the cans have been ordered.
The cans have been ordered. So we went ahead without.
There was no, Dave, we had to talk about that, but that was a specialty can, I believe, right?
It, it, it is available. Uh, it would not, it would have been, um, it wouldn't have been more expensive than this can, but, uh, it wasn't an, uh, an extrapolated number right in the middle. It is a sort of a special order can. There's not many customers that do it. When we discussed this with the, the trash can manufacturers and all, it was, uh, we rarely supply that. I hear what you're saying and that's something that we can evaluate in the future.
Yeah, okay, um.
I won't, I, I won't let it, uh, we'll, we'll see how this works out and if we need to change something going forward, uh, we'll consider it.
Okay, I, it's just. Okay, it's just one looks comically small, the other looks comically large.
All right. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm sure we'll be talking about this more in the future. We look forward to the new cans coming out.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nice work.
All righty, we will now move on to our final work session item, a closed meeting for the discussion of the performance of the city manager pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. I will now entertain a motion to enter a closed meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Woods.
I move to enter a closed meeting for the discussion of the performance of the city manager pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All righty, any further discussions? Mr. Kessler, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are now in closed session.
Close the session.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as we go forward here in the middle of this wintertime, or as those of us with school-aged children call it, the fourth day of our seclusion, I'd like to just take a moment to reflect on former President Carter's remarkable life, service to our country, as well as Rosalind Carter, too. This is officially the day of mourning for Carter on that, and he did so much, so many humanitarian efforts with that. But also, we're starting off the new year here with a new council, too. And I wanted to ask Pastor A.J. Heine to come and offer a general blessing for us moving forward, if I may. Father Heine?
Thank you very much. It is good to be with you on this national day of mourning and on the start of this city council. If it would be okay, I'll offer two prayers, but not a long sermon. Just two prayers. One, like you mentioned, acknowledging and giving thanks for the life of President Carter, and then a prayer for the city council. If you would, please pray with me. Into your hands, oh merciful Lord, we commend your servant Jimmy Carter, and we thank you for his life and witness, for his leadership and for his service. We pray that you would receive him into the arms of your mercy, into the blessed rest of everlasting peace, and into the glorious company of the saints in light. Amen.
Amen.
Almighty God, we are grateful for all those who labor on behalf of our city, and we are grateful for all those who bear the authority of government at all levels and throughout the world. We pray especially that you would send down upon the members of our city council the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people of our community. We ask this all in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, A.J.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. All right, well, thank you. I'm going to now go on to my mayor's report. I want to wish everyone a happy new year, happy 2025, and new year, new council. I want to welcome once again Counselor Overholzer, Counselor Lake Shepherd, and Counselor Park. It's wonderful to have you all up here. They cut their teeth Tuesday night at the organizational meeting, but now they're ready to get down to work and happy to have you. I was at the Y the other day, and I was speaking with the executive director, Jeff Cole, and he asked me to share with the city that the Stanton YMCA is celebrating their one, they just celebrated their 150th anniversary, which is a sesquicentennial anniversary. And so I just wanted to plug them and make sure that you know about all their fantastic resources. If you don't, please look up their social media platforms and go to their website. You can sign up for their newsletter or just go take a tour. Thank you all. Matters from other council members.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Woods.
I would like to say happy new year to each and every one. And I would like to read the nominations committee appointments. So the nominations committee met on December 11th and would like to make the following motion. To appoint Tala Gallimore to the redevelopment and housing authorities to fill the unexpired term of Ann Brindum, ending February 28, 2025. To appoint Amanda Kaufman to the Valley Community Service Board to fill the unexpired term of Anna Levitt, ending August 31, 2025. To appoint Michael Nay to the Valley Community Service Board for a three-year term, beginning January 1, 2025, ending December 31, 2027. To appoint John Hutchison to the Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Joe Mills, ending February 28, 2025. To appoint Sandy Carrero to the Tourism Advisory Board for a three-year term, beginning December 1, 2024, and ending November 30, 2027. To reappoint Bill Chris to the Lewis Creek Committee for a three-year term, beginning December 1, 2024, and ending November 30, 2027. To reappoint Natasha Ranhart and Susan Mace to the Youth Commission for three-year terms, beginning December 1, 2024, and ending November 30, 2027.
Thank you. Nominations do not require a second. Any discussion? All righty then, Mr. Kessler, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Woods. Is there, do any other members of council have news to share?
Yeah, I have one more thing.
Go right ahead, Al. Oh, okay. Go right ahead, Counselor Woods.
I would like to thank you, Michelle, which is now our mayor, Michelle Edwards, Mayor Michelle Edwards, for hosting and organizing the Christmas luncheon at Trinity Episcopal Church. Thank you so much. And we had a good time for the community, and we had some volunteers, which I volunteered, and a couple of people from the staff volunteer, our city manager, and also John Keen. So thank you so much again. That was a rewarding experience that day. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woods. It's always very rewarding. Excellent. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would just like to share, if everyone, not sure if everyone knows yet, but the city recently got underway with an update to our city's comprehensive plan late this fall, late past fall. So the comprehensive plan is a state-required document that basically sets a 20-year vision for every community. Every community is supposed to have one. It needs to be updated or reviewed for update every five years. So we just got ours update underway, and I just wanted to announce that January 22, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., we're having our first open house to kick off and to start getting public feedback on the comprehensive plan update. We're going to have it at Stanton High School. So a big component of this comprehensive plan update is public engagement and public outreach. We really want to have strong engagement because this is, this is your plan. This is our city's plan. It's basically a guiding document to set policy and decision-making for the next several years until we look at updating it again. So we want to try to encourage as much participation as possible. There will be multiple opportunities to engage, but this is the first one, and I would strongly encourage everyone, if they can, to come out for it.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. All righty, well, there's no further comment?
One thing I did mean to mention earlier. The farmer's market is continuing on. They're doing the winter market, starting this Saturday morning in the, I guess it's the basement, the lower floor of Emmanuel Episcopal Church on Frederick, on West Frederick there as well. And Christmas tree pickup is next Wednesday, as well, the 15th. So, okay.
Thank you, Count Vice Mayor. Yes, Counselor Overholzer.
I just wanted to say that Counselor Shepherd and I helped judge the celebration of lights at Jifty Hill Park. So we did that in December. And Counselor Park and Shepherd and I participated in a day-long training session by the Virginia Municipal League yesterday. We learned about, or got a refresher really, on freedom of information and cybersecurity and communication and a lot of other germane matters. It was helpful and a nice time of fellowship. On Monday, Counselor Campbell and I attended the Lewis Creek Watershed Advisory Committee, the highlight of which was a presentation by Allison Denby on the YMCA project on New Hope Road. Very exciting project with new playing fields and youth facilities. It's in the floodplain and a very thoughtful, comprehensive discussion on how to mitigate the environmental effects and in fact, improve the stream quality alongside the project.
Thank you so much. We'll move on, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Kessler, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. We will now move on to Item B, public hearing and consideration of a request by Augusta Opportunities Incorporated for a special use permit to revise the master plan for the planned residential development known as Old South Village and Southview. Ms. Boergaard.
Yeah, Tim Hartless, our planning manager, is here this evening to walk through this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Hartless.
So Old South and Southview is a planned residential development, which is located off of Commerce Road and Green Hills Drive. The original special use permit which created this PRD was approved in 2006. The development consists of 98.6 acres of residential land, which eventually will be divided into 286 single-family lots and a little over nine acres of commercial land, which is currently platted as three commercial lots. To date, city council has approved final plans for four sections of the development, which have totaled 108 lots. The developer, Augusta Opportunities, is here tonight and requesting a special use permit to revise the master plan for the entire development. To give you a little bit of background, a planned residential development is permitted in all of our residential zoning districts with a special use permit. The process allows a developer to cluster housing units on smaller lots with smaller setbacks and the more easily developable portions of a property. And the less desirable areas for development are generally held as open space. The developer is required to provide recreational opportunities within that open space, and those are usually provided through amenities such as a walking trail, a playground, a picnic area. Generally, this requires the creation of an HOA. The HOA would own and maintain these amenities after the developer has constructed them. Usually, these amenities are constructed during the infrastructure construction of a new housing development. In this case, the developer has agreed to provide a cash payment to the HOA, and the HOA will then use that money to provide its own amenities based upon the desires of the residents in the neighborhood. The developer, the HOA representatives, and the city met in the planning conference room back in April of 2024. Both the developer and the HOA expressed a desire in to reduce the number of amenities that were required for Old South and Southview. And this revised master plan is the result of their negotiations and their agreement. So the result of this master plan reduces the number of amenities to be provided from four to two. Those are called amenity A and amenity B. It eliminates all of the required walking trails in the development. Any trails that the HOA may provide in the future will not be required as a condition of the special use permit approval, but would be at the discretion of the HOA. The developer has agreed to make a cash payment to the HOA in the amount of $35,000, which would cover the cost of the build-out of the amenities. The association will then take responsibility for providing equipment, structures, buildings, anything really that's provided within that amenity. And an agreement has been signed. And an agreement has been signed between the two entities. Uh, the common areas will be organized into two categories. There's a native area and a mode-use area. The mode-use area would be regularly mowed and maintained to promote recreation, and the native area would be, um, kind of left in a natural state, but it would be mowed at least once annually. Uh, for the community amenities, it states that at the discretion of the HOA, the community amenity area shall include, but not be limited to, one or more of the following: a commercial-grade play elements, such as a swing set or a playset, uh, picnic amenities such as tables or grills, and/or gathering amenities, uh, such as a pavilion, a gazebo, or benches. I will note that the revised master plan does not change the density of the development, uh, does not change the layout of any of the lots, uh, no changes to the infrastructure or the amount of open space and common area that's provided. At its December 19th, 2024 meeting, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing. Uh, during the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the request, uh, but there were several people who spoke, expressing concerns, uh, with traffic and the large number of homes that are served by only one means of ingress and egress. Uh, on a 3-0 vote, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this revised master plan. Um, they did, uh, they did recommend this with some conditions, and those conditions are that any lighting of the common areas and amenities must be wholly contained within the common area, may not spill over onto any adjacent residential properties. A building permit, uh, may be required for some of the amenities. The HOA shall inquire with the Community Development Department's Building Services Division prior to beginning any work, and all work must comply with the provisions of the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code. Uh, and the last condition states that a plan must be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department, uh, for the build-out of amenity A and B prior to beginning any work in those areas. You have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them, uh, at this time or come back after the public hearing.
Counselors, we have questions?
Mr. Hartless, this might be a question for the developer during the public hearing, but, um, was there any type of, um, basis of cost or anything that supported the $35,000? I just, I'm a little concerned that that's not enough to provide the level of community or amenities that a community this size would need.
Uh, there was some discussion, uh, in our meeting back in April about the cost of amenities. Um, and this was the number that was negotiated between the HOA and the developer. So perhaps, uh, the developer can, can answer that in more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Counselors, questions?
Just exactly what amenity in A and amenity B refer to?
So, they're marked on, on the revised master plan with circles. Um, we're uncertain exactly what those amenities will include. It'll be based upon, you know, the desires of the HOA, um, but they will include at least one of those items that I referenced earlier, the gathering amenity, the picnic area, the playground.
The moan area and the native area, that's not considered in an amenity?
No, that's just open space. That's not an amenity. The amenity is the actual recreational area within the open space.
Further questions for Mr. Hartless? Thank you, Mr. Hartless. Is the applicant in the room? Would you like to speak?
How are y'all doing this evening?
Good evening.
I'm Eric Hooball. I'm with, uh, Augusta Opportunities. Uh, thank you for your time. Appreciate that. Um, uh, to answer your question, Adam, where we came, uh, across with the number that we came with, we came and agreed upon, where we came, uh, with our agreed-upon deal is we were looking at what the master plan had previously been. We came up with a number that would work with the HOA, uh, agreeing back and forth to see what would work inside the HOA. Um, one, because where it was previously, it was, um, uh, I believe it was three or four areas, and they were all children's play areas. As when that was done back in the mid 2, uh, like 2006 or '07, when it was first done, um, things have changed in our, um, uh, lifestyles and what needs to be, and also in the community of what they may need and what they want. And we want to allow them to be able to make that decision, um, and that's why we came upon the monetary of, uh, concession of $35,000 that we all agreed upon. Uh, are there any other questions that I might be able to answer?
Not at this time.
Okay.
No more questions?
All right, thank you.
Alrighty. I don't have the public hearing. Racketed section, um, in a moment.
Are you ready to open the public hearing?
I'm ready to open the public hearing, but I have the entire.
You have the, you have the script in front of you?
I do. Um, in a moment, I will open the public hearing. Uh, this is a time when that council sets aside, uh, to hear from citizens and others about the specific topic on this, on this specific topic on the agenda. We ask that when you approach the, uh, podium, that you state your name, your address, and please keep your remarks to five minutes. Uh, when you reach the five-minute, minute time limit, I will let you know that your time has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing topic. If you raise your hand during the public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during the council meeting for other public hearings and matters of the public. Please keep your, um, remarks to five minutes. Please approach. Yes, please come on in.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Jeremy Bailey. I live at 114 Bear Guard Drive in Stanton. That is in Old South Village, uh, Section 2, I believe. Um, first of all, I want to thank you for, for your service. Thank you, and congratulations to the new members as well. Uh, I've served on the HOA for the last four years, uh, two years as president and two years as the immediate past president. Um, and in my role as immediate past president, I was the chairman of a committee that dealt specifically with city and developer relations. Um, and as such, I played a key role in the planning of this, uh, master plan revision. Um, as such, I do support the, uh, plan. Uh, I just, I wanted to make a couple of comments, um, surrounding the plan and a couple of comments surrounding the experience of that, uh, negotiation and planning that, uh, may help, uh, future developments, uh, like this. So first of all, um, to address the payment of $35,000, uh, what it, what it will pay for, absolutely, is a, an outfitting of community amenity B, I'm sorry, community amenity A. Uh, we initially had requested, uh, more. Um, however, through negotiation, we, we, uh, we ended with the amount of $35,000. Um, would we like more? Yes. However, that's the agreement that we came to, and that's the agreement that I'm prepared to support in front of the council. Let me take my notes back out. The, uh, the other areas that I'd like to address and talk about briefly is, um, the need to, uh, address the city ordinances governing planning communities. During the planning process of this, it seemed that they were lacking some important commi, uh, considerations. Um, some of, some of these include, um, there do not appear to be any standards governing community amenities, uh, allowing developers to install, uh, less-than-commercial-grade, um, equipment that then becomes a liability. Previously, under a different developer before Augusta Opportunities took over, um, or bought the development, uh, we had some play equipment that lasted as little as, you know, we had to get rid of it in four years. Um, walking trails, we wanted to get rid of those because there aren't any standards governing the quality of walking trails, uh, which would create a liability for the HOA and a maintenance, uh, liability, uh, after the first rainstorm. So that's why we wanted to get rid of those, to give us time to build up the funding to install, uh, ones that would last, uh, a long time and be safe. Um, considerations for traffic calming. Currently, I just want to point out, our neighborhood street right-of-way, rights-of-way are somewhere between 40 and 50 feet wide. Um, that's actually wider than both lanes of the interstate highways around here. Um, there's studies that have been done that, um, that demonstrate that drivers take their cues off their environmental, uh, surroundings. And so we have had issues with, uh, contractors and residents alike speeding, uh, up and down Stonewall Jackson Boulevard especially. And, um, the research I've done seems to indicate that, uh, narrower streets and stra, and traffic calming done intelligently could, uh, help with this a great deal. Um, obviously, we'd have to take into consideration things like plowing. However, um, this has been successfully implemented in cities like Portland and in countries like the Netherlands, uh, with great success, and those areas do get, um, snow. Um, requirements for access to the community, uh, we do have only one in and out, one in, one egress to the community. Uh, we could benefit perhaps with traffic, traffic calming. We could also benefit maybe with a second entrance considered, um, at some point. And then finally, uh, landscaping requirements, landscaping and street, uh, lighting, we did have some discussions about that surrounding the master plan. It appears, I'm not sure exactly what standards there are for, uh, landscaping a, a planned community such as ours. That does tie into the traffic management. Landscaping can be used as a smart way to, uh, to deal with that. Um, there's a general clause in the master plan talking about landscaping and talking about streetlights, but it really doesn't define what that is. Um, and that wasn't really anything that we felt that, that we could change, uh, at this point in the negotiations. Um, we felt like we, we had come to an agreement, and that's, that's where things stand. I don't know that it would be fair to the developer to require things that aren't specifically laid out in the ordinances. However, for future developments, um, I do think that, uh, it would be a great idea to address these things and maybe be a little more specific, um, in those. I do, if you want a copy of, of my ideas here, I can certainly provide that, uh, along with a number of references, um, supporting what I've said. So with that, again, thank you. I appreciate your time, and, um, yeah.
Thank you, Jeremy. Yes, if you could, Mr. Kessiker, he'll make copies for us. Thank you. Mr. Kessiker, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Welcome, caller. Can you hear us? Caller, are you there? Hello? Ms. Birch, can you hear me? Ms. Birch, can you see if your mute button is on? I can see that you are muted. Click your little microphone. Okay, well, why don't we go ahead and, uh, we'll go to you and, uh...
Hello?
Okay.
Uh, Constance Birch, um, Mary Grayling. Um, this is the first I, um, heard of this development, so I apologize if I should have had prior knowledge, but it occurs to me that it's a way for a developer to get out of some of the things that the Planning Commission wished them to do, um, uh, less expensively. My, uh, family moved to Stanton in 1975 in what was then a fairly new Green Spring Valley. I had teenagers and, um, a Bessie Weller student, and we looked forward to a swimming pool. Um, it's now, uh, 2025, there's no swimming pool and, uh, never will be. I remember going around with a, a petition to try and, and get one. So it's, it's hard to get these, um, amenities or, um, recreation of things gone, um, being done. And so I just hope that the, um, I, I don't see how they have an HOA if the, um, buildings have not been built, but nevertheless, they agreed to this, but I'm sure, as the last speaker said, under some, um, pressure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Birch. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. My name is Karen Magno. I reside at 303 Stonewall Jackson Boulevard in Old South Village slash Southview. Um, I am the HOA president, and I'm gonna go ahead and just read what I have prepared.
Yeah.
Since my husband and I moved here three years ago, I've seen the city incur the immense expense of completing, completely rebuilding the full length of Stonewall Jackson Boulevard because the original developer did not properly build it. And I'm assuming the city's inspections of the work didn't catch the problems with the subbase. Our HOA board, which consists of current OSV and Southview residents, has spent significant hours advocating for its members to ensure that city ordinances, codes, stormwater, and road management be enforced, and that the amenities promised to them in this, in the city-approved master plan be of adequate and sustainable quality. The master plan revision is a result of the OSV board's requests for the city's help with erosion, sidewalk, and road issues. On December 2nd, 2024, Tim Hartless, Rodney Rhodes, and Peter Kessiker helped facilitate a master plan revision agreement between OSV and Augusta Opportunities, releasing Augusta Opportunities of their responsibility of providing walking paths and amenity equipment in, re, in place of 35, a $35,000 amount offered. The lack of the city's specific requirements regarding the amenities provided by the developer directly led to this revision. The promised amount will not outfit the residents of Old Southwest and Southview with sustainable, durable walking paths or amenity equipment in both amenity A and amenity B areas. Um, this, uh, I'm sorry, uh, the walking paths or amenity equipment that would be in accordance with a commercially or ADA acceptable standard expected for a community of 280 single-family homes. The board believes that the amenities approved by the city in the original master plan should have had specific outlined requirements. The city's current high-density, multi-use residential zoning ordinances for planned communities have proven to be inadequate when it comes to protecting the residents of Old South Village. Many more quality standards must be adopted for planned communities and subdivisions with high density and minimal lot sizes to ensure the quality of life promised to homebuyers of Old South Village. The following items should have been requirements of the master plan, but we have been told that the city has no current method of requiring these. You're gonna hear some repet, repeated, uh, issues. More than one ingress-egress road in a community of this size. Traffic calming measures, as Jeremy mentioned. Sidewalks on both sides of all roads in high-density communities. The sidewalks at the beginning of Stonewall Jackson Boulevard were turned over to the city by the original developer and are not ADA compliant. Specific grading requirements for every home site that will ensure minimization of construction and stormwater runoff. ADA-compliant, permanent walking paths, commercial-grade playground equipment, and all other amenities as laid out in any city-approved development master plan moving forward. Curb breaks that are equal in width to the driveways and garages, thus reducing the amount of street parking. Streetlights at road junctions, we've been told that there will be no additional streetlights installed in Old South Village and Southview. Proper planting, landscaping of non-invasive species by developers and builders on property lots and common areas. Finally, residents bought homes in Old South Village with the understanding that, per the original city-approved and proposed new master plans, there would only ever be single-family homes built. However, with a remaining undeveloped 19 acres falling in Augusta County, that promise is in jeopardy. is in jeopardy as even more dense housing such as townhomes and/or apartments could be built on that parcel. The residents of Old South Village respectfully request that the city work closely with Augusta County to take immediate measures that will ensure that only single-family homes be built on the Augusta County parcel, whose traffic flow will also be running through Old South Village's city streets.
Ms. Magno, your time is up. If you'd like to, that's wonderful. Thank you so much. If you'd like to give that copy to Mr. Kessinger or email that to him, if he would like us to have that. Thank you, Ms. Magno.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessinger, is anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised.
Would anyone else like to come speak on this topic? All righty, all those who want to, the public hearing is now closed. I will now entertain. Does anyone have any more discussion, any more questions for staff?
Madam Mayor, I would just, I've been pretty involved with this agenda item for past year, and I've gotten a chance to talk to a lot of the residents out there, and I've gone out there and had several site visits, and I've coordinated with our city staff quite a bit. And these are very much so legitimate concerns that are shared tonight, particularly the amenities aspect, the trails aspect, the fact that we have a master plan approved for a certain quality of community and it's not being delivered. I mean, I think that's a real problem, especially for people that are, you know, this is the largest investment someone's going to make in a home. So I think it's critical that the community that was advertised is delivered. But other than that, you heard some of the infrastructure issues, but it wasn't really mentioned tonight. There was considerable drainage issues out there as well, both just with lots themselves not draining after rainfall or off common space drainage running into people's lots, getting into their crawl spaces. So it is a real issue. That being said, I think it's very much a positive that this resolution has been reached. I'm certainly not here to place any blame. This is a very complex site, just from the age of the site. It's been, I mean, approved in 2006, has sat stagnant somewhat for a while, and then in the past few years has really taken off accelerated in terms of home building. The topography out there is also obviously a challenge. Change in developer ownership, I mean, that's an issue also. But the fact that both the developer staff and the HOA had to spend so much time and resources, you know, to get to this resolution, which could have been averted if we had standard, a few standard codes and additional requirements in place in our ordinance, I think, I think that really shows that, and I want to say, staff has always been great about bringing changes to the ordinance that they feel need to be done. So I don't want to reinforce what was said from the residents tonight, that this is something that I think we really need to focus on moving forward, is making sure we update our ordinance to get, and this is not adding additional regulations. These regulations are in place. It's just there's too much ambiguity and not enough detail for our staff to properly enforce these requirements. So with that being said, I think that really should be a focus of the city moving forward.
Thank you, Councilor Campbell. Is there anyone wanting to add comments?
Can we encourage your direct staff to draft the changes that would be appropriate? Is that the appropriate step at this time?
So this, I would say this is a, this would be a much larger overhaul. I think the proper thing would be to first have an evaluation of what sections probably should be updated to address these issues before we direct any changes be considered or looked at.
Who would do that?
I think it's something that should probably go through the planning commission.
Okay, but tonight, right here now, we are just considering amenity A and B and not those large issues that will come back to us later. So I thank you for letting us, you know, get involved and letting us know that and for the residents for speaking, but...
But keep in mind, this is revision to the master plan, which dictates all of this.
It dictates all of it, but they can also revise again.
The HOA can.
The HOA can revise again. So because they, it seems like they came to this agreement that we have in front of us.
Yep, I'm absolutely supportive of the agreement in place tonight.
You're supporting the agreement tonight.
The agreement they had to come to is indicative of a larger problem we can solve at a different time. There's so much of this ends up landing just on the, on the issue of you got to, you know, when they said an amenity being more specific, and that would have helped a lot as well. And it just kind of, in the end, it comes down to if you don't have it in writing, you don't have it. But I, again, I support this agreement they've come to.
Okay, with no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Woods.
I moved that the city council adopt the resolution and approve the special use permit and conditions as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you, Councilor Woods. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Councilor Parks. Any further discussion? Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you all. We'll now move on to item C, a public hearing in consideration of an amendment to Chapter 18.120 yard building setback and open space exceptions of Title 18 zoning of the Stanton City Code to allow alleys and private access easements to be used for primary access to construct a single-family dwelling in certain situations. Ms. Beauregard.
Tim Hartless is back to walk through this item.
Thank you. The zoning code requires that a public street form the direct and primary access to all residential lots. And it goes on to say that alleys where they exist may only form secondary means of access. Recently, or in recent years, staff has noticed an increase in the number of instances where this requirement has become an impediment to development. Typically, these issues are due to lot shape, topography of the lot, or high traffic volume on the public street, which results in the city engineer not wanting to issue an entrance permit. An entrance permit is the mechanism by which we approve a new access point to the public street. So in October, staff requested planning commission consider this and to authorize staff to work on a draft amendment that would address this issue. And they did agree to authorize that amendment, and it is before you here tonight. Due to the number of recent instances where this problem has arisen, staff believes it would be appropriate to amend the zoning code to allow, with conditions, alleys and private access easements to be used for primary access to existing lots. And I want to stress that this is for existing lots. We would not be approving any new lots that would use alleys or access easements as their primary access. The city engineer, when they evaluate an entrance permit, they look at a number of things such as topography, location of existing public utilities such as water meters, sewer cleanouts. Perhaps there's a bank next to the street that creates issues with cutting an entrance. They also look at how the, how a vehicle would access the street. We want to avoid situations where someone has to back into the public street, especially if it's a public street that has high traffic volumes. While drafting this proposed language, staff considered a number of issues, and the result of this draft amendment is that only one single-family dwelling may be constructed per lot when they use an alley or an access easement. The dwelling must face the public street and not the alley or the easement. Pedestrian access must be provided and maintained from the front door of the dwelling to the public street. In cases where an easement is used, the applicant must provide proof of an ingress, an ingress easement to the satisfaction of the city attorney. And a driveway entrance permit must be approved by the city engineer evaluating the alley or the easement's access point to the public street. At its December 19th, 2024 meeting, the planning commission conducted a public hearing. During that hearing, no one spoke in opposition, and the planning commission recommended approval on a unanimous vote. You have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them now or come back after the public hearing.
Questions from council?
Just to be sure, I heard you're right. This is a fix for existing conditions, not an ongoing.
That's true. It's only for existing lots. And only in cases where the city engineer determines that issuing a driveway entrance permit is not a good idea. In the existing lot where we can find an adequate place to have an entrance, we would require that entrance off the public street. And that's the vast majority of the single-family homes that are built in Stanton. This problem only arises once in a while, but we have seen an increase in the number here recently.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Hartless. I'm so sorry, guys. In a moment, I will open the public hearing, and this is a time when council, that councils decide to hear from citizens and others about this specific topic on the agenda. We ask that you give your name and address, and you keep your remarks to five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular topic. If you raise your hand during this particular hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during matters of the public. And please keep your comments to five minutes. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity, I will close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing, so if you wish to speak, please approach the podium, and we will alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. Again, the public hearing concerns only this item. Is, oh, thank you. Is there anybody present who would like to speak on this topic? Saying no and none, Mr. Kessinger, is anyone wanting to speak via Zoom?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised.
All righty, we'll close the public hearing. And is there any more discussion from council, any more questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move that city council adopt that ordinance and approve the amendment as recommended by the planning commission.
I second that.
Is there any further discussion or questions from council? Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kessinger. Thank you. We'll now move on to consider item D, proposed fiscal year 2026 holiday schedule. Ms. Beauregard.
Non-Ben, our chief human resources officer is here this evening.
Mayor Edwards and members of council, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Ben.
It's a time of year when I come before you requesting your approval of the city's holiday schedule for the next fiscal year. Our policy states that the city of Stanton will observe 13 paid holidays annually plus any additional holidays as granted by city council. The holiday schedule is planned in advance to allow employees and departments to plan and coordinate operations. Staff scheduled to work essential services on a holiday are provided at alternate holiday. For FY '26, we are recommending the city observe 13 paid holidays, which you have in your briefing, plus two additional paid holidays granted by city council for a total of 15 paid holidays. For historical purposes, city council granted a total of 15 days in FY '25 and 14 days in FY '24 and FY '23. The FY '26 holiday schedule has two additional paid holidays added following Christmas and New Year's Day to include Friday, December 26, and Friday, January 2. While Christmas and New Year's Day have not fallen on a Thursday in quite some time in December of 2020, Christmas and New Year's Day fell on a Friday, and council approved two additional paid holidays for the preceding Thursday. Finally, relative to other localities as well as the Commonwealth of Virginia, in terms of the number of paid holidays, our calendar has been quite comparable. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ben. Councilors, do you have any questions?
So you said in previous years, the number of paid holidays was just one less?
It has varied.
Not because of Juneteenth?
We added Juneteenth. We also added one, we get two personal holidays. We, council added an additional personal holiday. We looked at what other localities were providing to their employees, and some do that as well. And so council approved that a couple of years ago. Keep in mind, this is, I think employees truly value and appreciate city council allowing paid time off. So it's, I think it's something that we need and should continue to do.
I like the term personal holidays. I just get personal days, but personal holidays.
Personal holiday.
I think you've mentioned this is a big selling point for hires.
Yeah, I think it's a selling point. I'm not sure how many people go into it, but in terms of asking specifically what paid holidays they get, but it is certainly something that's valued by our employees.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the fiscal year 2026 holiday schedule as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Overholzer. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Excellent, thank you, Councilor Shepherd. Any further discussion? Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ben. Have a good evening. All righty, we'll now move on to item E, consideration of Stanton City Code amendments to Chapter 3.15 relating to real estate tax relief for the elderly and permanently disabled. Ms. Beauregard.
Maggie Reagan, our commissioner of revenue is here this evening to walk through this item.
Good evening, Ms. Reagan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is, this item is a request based on my analysis of information available to me to increase the limits on this program. The state code sets out the general parameters for localities to adopt a program for either relief or deferral of real estate tax for persons who are considered elderly or disabled based on the requirements in the state code. Locally, we have set up our own parameters for this program. Currently, the program has a caps, income cap of $35,000 annually and an asset of cap of $70,000. And I'm presenting this evening that you increase those thresholds to income of $50,000 and assets not to exceed $80,000. And over the years, we have made increases in the parameters to this program. When I first started here 20 years ago, it was $20,000 and $50,000. But as our assessments go up, as social security benefits go up, which is what most of our folks are living on, we have made several adjustments to these thresholds over the years, and this would just... And this would just be the next step in that process. In addition, the program would be simplified by changing the sliding scale structure. It has had a lot of, a much, anywhere from 5% to 100% in the past. And this time, I'm asking you to change that structure or allow me to change that structure so it's just four different brackets. If you look at the brackets that I'm proposing and you think of, excuse me, a double bell curve, the majority of people fall in either that first bracket or that third bracket. Those people who are already in the program. So this would just make it a little bit simpler. But I don't think would particularly change the overall process of the program. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What's the total amount of tax relief that we grant now under this program?
For 2024, we had 110 parcels participating in the program, the total relief of about 100, just over $125,000. I expect this will allow more folks to participate in the program. Of course, we won't know that until we send the applications out for the year.
You have an estimate on how much that would increase about with these changes you've recommended?
There's really no way to know. I mean, we know what, that it'll have an effect on the folks who are currently in the program by a few thousand dollars more. But we don't know how many additional people will ask to come into the program based on the new parameters.
Changes make sense to me.
Any other questions from counselors? Thank you for your recommendations.
Sure.
Reagan. I will now entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Vice Mayor Arrowood.
I move to adopt the proposed amendments to Stanton City Code, Chapter 3.15, as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Overholzer. And any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask Mr. Kessker to call the roll.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kessker. We've now come to matters from the city manager. Ms. Beauregard, do you have any information you would like to share this evening?
I do.
Great.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I have quite a bit, actually, to share. The first is, Ms. Moyers alluded to it earlier, but I just want to reiterate that the city, it's $12.9 million in ARPA funds. Every penny was encumbered. Ms. Moyers was amazing to make sure that was accomplished. Now we have two years to spend the money. So it's not quite over, but the money has been encumbered. And so that was a really great thing. And congratulations to everybody who made that happen. Earlier, you heard a report on the refuse modernization. Those FAQs have now been posted on the website. And staff will start to work immediately on communication as we near the rollout of the new cans, which begins in early March, as was reported earlier. Sears Hill Bridge has been closed for a while, as you all know, but work will begin weather-depending on January 20. And we'll be putting out something on social media and on our newsfeed about that when the work, before the work begins and to provide some information on the construction schedule. So that's great news. The city is currently accepting applications for outside agency funding as part of the FY '26 budget cycle. Eligible agencies can apply. If you go to our main webpage, click on Departments, Finance and City Budget. The application is online. Martin Luther King Day is Monday, January 20, which means city schedule will be altered. And I'll just go over those really quickly. Obviously, that Monday is a holiday, so city of Stanton offices and facilities will be closed. Residential trash that is picked up on that Monday will be picked up on Wednesday instead. The Central Business District customers will receive trash collection on Tuesday, the 21st, and on Wednesday, the 22nd, which is not a regular day. It'll be an additional day. And pickup will resume for the remaining days of the week as normal. The recycling center will be closed on Monday, the 20th, and will reopen on Tuesday. The library will be closed on the 20th and reopen on Tuesday. The book drop, of course, will be available for returns. As I mentioned earlier, all administrative offices are closed, and will resume on the 21st. And if you go on our website or check our social media feed, you'll find all the details and links to everything I just said. The city has been awarded another round of highway safety improvement funds through the Virginia Department of Transportation. This brings the total to $2.2 million. These funds will be used to install new, high-visibility marked crosswalks with highly reflective materials and pedestrian signal heads with pedestrian countdown signals, install flashing yellow arrows, pedestrian signal heads with pedestrian countdown signals, and unsignalized intersection improvements. That's a lot, but it means our intersections are going to get a lot better. Updates will follow about the timing of this project and locations of the crosswalks that will be improved as we receive bids. And finally, I'd just like to make some remarks about the snow. We've been, and to give a progress report on the cleanup, and yes, we are expecting more snow on Friday, which is tomorrow. But there, you know, spring is coming. First of all, I would like to give a hearty thanks to all the city staff who have been working hours and hours to clear snow off streets and sidewalks, most notably Public Works and Parks and Recreation. And of course, to our public safety personnel and police and fire who continue to do their jobs no matter the weather. We have amazing people who work for the city, and I can't thank them enough. That being said, I want to address the concerns we are receiving about sidewalks that are still not cleared. I'll just, I'm going to read our city ordinance and what it says. "It shall be the duty of every person occupying any property abutting on a paved sidewalk to remove snow, sleet, or ice from such sidewalk within six hours after the snow or sleet ceases to fall or the ice ceases to form, unless the snow or sleet fell or the ice formed during the night, in which case it shall be removed by 12 noon on the following day." State law allows a locality to require removal of snow from sidewalks. I've been walking and driving around the city the past few days, and I'm comfortable to say that the majority of sidewalks that I saw had not been cleared. And I have a point to bringing this up. The rub in this conversation has been had for many years prior by my predecessors is enforcement. Noncompliance of a city ordinance is a Class IV misdemeanor. And while there's no jail time, there is a fine imposed of up to $250, and the individual will have a conviction on their record. But I guess my question is, are we a community that wants to criminalize not shoveling snow? I would also argue that six hours is an unrealistic timeframe to clear snow for many. I also am required to apply this equally for the entire city, no matter if you are a large business or an elderly citizen who's unable to clear their sidewalk. I can't pick and choose who's sided or not. I did ask police for data, the police department, for data on the number of charges for not clearing snow off a sidewalk as far back as their current record system, which is 2004, and the answer is one. I think this proves and indicates that the ordinance is exceedingly difficult to manage and enforce. Storm context matters. Using measurements obtained at the water treatment plant, this storm measured seven inches. That makes this the 12th biggest one-day snow in the last 25 years. On average, snowfalls of six inches or more happen less than once a year. The last storm of this magnitude was 2022, and before that, 2018. And my point is that these snowfalls are unusual for us. There has been additional aggravation from this storm because of the cold temperatures that followed, which means the snow and ice have been sticking around. And those who have lived in Virginia for a while know well that often when it snows, the temps get above freezing pretty quickly, sometimes 60 degrees, it's happened, following the event. And had temps risen in the past few days, I would probably not be talking about this right now. I realize the snow and ice is inconvenient and annoying, and I just urge everyone to be patient, be kind, and be helpful to each other. And as far as the next system that will start this Friday, we expect much less impact on the area. It will be more of a salt event rather than a plow event. Public Works will begin salting the streets tomorrow in preparation. And Parks and Recreation staff will be ready to resume their work clearing sidewalks around city facilities and in our parking lots. The areas around our parks are secondary as far as priority, but they will start to work on those as well. So again, I urge everyone to please be patient with the city and with each other. This will pass. There are only 69 days until spring. That's all I have for tonight, Madam Mayor.